And where's Scott going?
I'm just gonna go there.
Maybe I'll sit down.
Not on top of your shoulder.
All right, we'll open this candidates forum.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome to this candidates forum for the school board for the Pecanico School District. My name is Susan Maggiato, I'm the president of the River Towns League of Women Voters. And we're so happy and grateful to be partnering with Vicky and the PTA who helped set up this forum tonight. Now, this is your opportunity to listen to your candidates views on issues of importance to your community. So that you will have a chance, you will be well informed when you vote on Tuesday, May 21st. Your Moen is our timekeeper tonight. And our moderator is Debbie Reisner. Ms. Reisner is resident of Rye and a member and past president of the Rye, Rye Brook and Portchester League of Women Voters and has been doing moderating for 16 years. So we're in good hands tonight. Just a word about the league. You may know the League of Women Voters is a voter service organization, and indeed we are. That's been our mission since our founding in 1920 after women got the right to vote. But we are also an advocacy group. We do take positions on issues of public policy. And then we lobby our legislators, whether on the local, state, national level for our positions. How do we arrive at our positions? By our members' study and consensus. So our positions represent the views of our members. In that sense, we are a political organization, but we are staunchly nonpartisan. That means that we never support or oppose candidates or political parties. A word about the recording policy. Oh, and might I add, the league's membership is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. The recording policy the candidates have agreed to. The only entities authorized to record or broadcast or stream this are authorized by the league. And nobody can broadcast or stream a portion of it under FCC regulations unless it's media, news, or radio or TV. The reason for that is we don't, we want it shown in its entirety. So nobody can manipulate it to give a false or misleading impression of any candidate. So that's just our standard policy about recording. The forum, this forum is being recorded. And it will be available very shortly on our YouTube channel LWV River Towns. And we will also post links to it on websites, the PTA's website and the school district, and of course, the league.
Ourpecantico.com.
Ourpecantico.com. Okay, and with that, I will turn the meeting over to our moderator, who will remain off camera, I believe. Right, and the candidates will take their places. Thank you.
Thanks. Awesome. That one needs to come into this.
So, welcome gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm going to, for everyone's benefit, read the rules for today's forum. The order of opening and closing remarks has been determined by the flip of a coin. The order in which candidates will respond to questions will be rotated to assure fairness. A timekeeper is positioned facing the speakers and the timekeeper will indicate when 30 seconds remain in the allowed speaking time, and again, when time is up. Throughout the forum, no comments of a personal or abusive nature will be permitted. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement. At the conclusion of the opening statements, the moderator will ask questions submitted by the community members. Questions are vetted by the league members to make sure they are legible, relevant, and not repetitive or abusive. The order in which candidates will respond will be rotated by the moderator to ensure fairness. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to respond to each question. Each candidate will be allowed one 30-second rebuttal in the course of the forum. At the conclusion of the question period, each candidate will have a two-minute closing statement. The order of response will be opposite to the order of the opening statement. During closing statements, the moderator may grant a rebuttal if the moderator deems it appropriate. And beyond that, campaign literature is not allowed in the room. No substitutes will be permitted, but of course, that's clearly not necessary. And no open chair for a candidate who doesn't show up is permitted, but again, that's not necessary. So let's begin.
Awesome, thank you.
My pleasure. So our first opening statement will be from Scott Graves.
Nice, well, thank you. Good evening to everybody. I wanted to thank the PTA and the Women's League of Voters for putting on this evening. It's an important part of the process, so thank you for making this forum happen. I, I, you know, I, I've come to the, well, sorry, excuse me, I wanted to thank you for having me. I, wow, I'm really sorry, I've had a moment here, but I wanted to thank everybody for having me this evening. I have been a member of this community for six years now. And we, my family and I moved here from Brooklyn about six years ago. And we have been active members of the community. My three daughters have been educated here, and my wife is a family and consumer science teacher here at the school. Sorry, excuse me, thanks.
I don't know for Scott, I know what it's like to get up in front of the camera. So Scott wants to take a little extra time and get rolling, I'm happy to provide it to him.
I appreciate that, Brian. I, I, I wanted to, I wanted to recognize Brian in regards to the fact that in a small community like Pecanico, we run against people who we love and admire. And in this case, I truly admire Brian and his family. And, you know, it happens at Pecanico that we have moments where we have to run against each other. And in this case, I'm very appreciative of, of, you know, having this opportunity to, to, you know, to be with Brian here tonight. But I'm, I'm committed to being an active member of this community, being a voice for our students and for our teachers and for our community, and I'm thrilled to be here tonight.
Okay, my name is Brian Geary, I've been on the school board now for three years. And during those three years, we've had tremendous success and progress at our school. We see it in improved academic outcomes with improved scores on state assessments and the introduction of a full, things like an introduction of a full-day junior pre-K program. We hear about it from our kids when they tell us about the new addition to school programs after school. We've added intramural sports, we've added new clubs, we've added homework help from work to more kids available more than ever. We see it in our collaborations with our neighbors like Stone Barns and Kike. And we feel it in the positive culture of our school. Three years, we've seen significant capital improvements around the school. All have been well-designed and well-executed. It's important to note that all of this and much more has been done in a financially responsible and sustainable way. To be clear, though, this has been a team effort between the school board, the administration, our teachers, our staff, and our community, you guys out there in the audience, and I'd like to say thank you for that. I've had the pleasure of speaking with and listening to many community members, I'm both in person and on the phone. And I'm incredibly gratified to learn that many of you share the same enthusiasm and optimism for this school and the, and the direction in which we are headed. At the same time, there's work to be done, and I look forward to it. And I'm out here tonight to ask for your support and your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pardon me, so the first question will be asked of Mr. Gary. Yeah. What will be your priorities as a school board member? Are there particular issues that motivate you to serve?
Okay, it's a kind of a two-part question, I'll begin with the first. After three years, there's much, like I said in my opening statement, much already in the works, like the extracurriculars, introduction. Really, the second go-around, what I'm really dialing in on and focusing on is academic performance of our students. Ensuring that our students are educated here in the school, they're learning here in the school, they're performing here in the school. That's incredibly important. And that they're prepared to excel at our partner high schools. So the first go-around, that's, we had a lot of things like extracurriculars, those are well on their way. Second go-around here for me, I'd like to focus more on academics. The second part of that was, I just repeated, it was like a two-part question.
Certainly, are there particular issues that motivate you to serve?
And you know what, I'm a member of this community, and I really believe in this community. I serve on several, I serve on the Friends of the Pecanico, Friends of the Rockefeller Preserve Board. I'm on the grounds committee of the Church of the Magdalene. I'm constantly here at the school picking up, dropping off at the pickleball courts, and I believe in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Graves?
Yeah, too.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, no, I'm, I'm an active member of the community as well. You know, I have, my wife is a teacher here. And, you know, I have, I've created programs that have brought our community together. We have families who are no longer have students here at the school. How can we bring them back to our school? How can we bring them back to our campus? And through pickleball program that has been supported, we've been, we've, we've had people, you know, that are now actively involved in learning more about our school through something simple like pickleball. And, you know, I've built sets here, you know, for our school plays. You know, I, you know, I, there, you know, I am involved in many of our fundraisers that are here. And I'm obsessed with public service. I think that, that, you know, being, having the opportunity to be able to give back to our community that we love so much is very important to me.
Thank you. All right, so question number two, the, Mr. Graves, you'll go first?
Sure.
Many community, community members do not have a full understanding of the board, what it does and its procedures. How can we remedy this, along with improved communication and accessibility with the community?
Well, I will say that our school is incredible at communicating. We have a number of, we have mailings, we have emails, we have text messages. So I feel currently that our community communicates in a very good way. We are also small, so I, I'd like to say that a lot of us are friends, or, you know, there is a very family sensibility about our community. So, you know, communication is, is very high. How can we get the community to find out more about what the board is doing? You know, we don't have a lot of people that show up at board meetings. And it would be, it would be great to have them, but the board's job is to, to listen to our community, listen to our teachers, hear what our students are, are thinking, and bring that to our superintendent. And that is the job of, of a board member, bring that to our superintendent and have that executed within our school. So.
Thank you, Mr. Gary?
Yeah, I would just ask that you repeat the question, please.
Many community, community members do not have a full understanding of the board, what it does and its procedures. How can we remedy this, along with improved communication and accessibility with the community?
Okay, well, one of the, the most important thing that the board does, or one of the most important, is that the school board sets the vision for the school. It takes into consideration the needs and the resources of the school, and then creates a vision for that school. What did we want this school to be, what we want the culture of this school to be? We then communicate that to the superintendent. So really, I look at it as setting the vision for the school. And that's one of the most important things that a school board member and a school board collectively does. In terms of that, how it functions, after 21 years of, of service with the Yonkers Fire Department where I currently work, I'm a big believer in the chain of command. And one of the ways that the school board works best, and when there's a chain of command that's followed. And whether that's the way that we act within the school board, there's a chain, there's policies that we have, goes up the ladder and down the ladder. And/or the way it happens as a school board member, when somebody comes to concern, comes to me with a concern. It cut, that's fine, I'm, I'm more than willing to hurt, to hear it. The first question is going to be, though, have you contacted with me the teacher? Have you contacted the principal? Has, you know, has it gone up to the superintendent? So it kind of follows this up and down. So in terms, that's kind of how the school board should work, and it often does work that. And I think that's why we've been fortunate to have a very successful school board by following that kind of chain of command and the policies we have in place. Last part I'll just talk about briefly is the communications, always a problem. We have problems, I'll use the word challenge, it's always a challenge. We have more ways to communicate than ever, but everybody seems to communicate differently. And it's something that we've talked about and would like to address more fully as a board and as a school.
Thank you. All right, so this next question will go first to Mr. Gary. What differentiates you from other candidates? What experiences or skills have you prepared? Have prepared you to serve?
I think that, I have a lot of experience, I have a lot of experience that's prepared me for this. I've served as, in terms of board service, I've served as a trustee for a union board that represented 330 firefighters for the city of Yonkers. I also serve on the Friends, another board I serve on is the Friends of the Rockefeller Preserve. I'm on the committee at the church, so that's kind of prepared me, I've been that type of thing. You know, what seems like a lifetime ago, I taught four years of high school English before getting on the fire department. So I put my toe into the water on, on education and ran away because it's, it wasn't for me. And that's why every time I, if I could teach her, I know how much, how hard it is and how challenging it can be. So that's certainly prepared me. And I think interestingly enough, not interestingly enough, but I spend a lot of time with my kids, I work a lot of nights and weekends. So I have a very good sense of what happens at, at the school. I'm a big believer in boots on the ground, and my boots are on the ground at the school just about every day the school's in session. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves?
Yeah, my work is with professional athletes, creators, people in the entertainment business. And I've been very fortunate to have sort of a futuristic predictive model that goes into how we go about our business. And because of that, it has given me sort of this vision as to where things are modeling for the future. I want to bring, you know, what I've learned in business into the school system because I firmly believe that we need to give our teachers and our students the, the, the best of the best, but we also have to think about what's going to be in the future. And I feel like, you know, I'm, my business puts me on the cusp of what's happening in technology, what's happening in the way people think. I have a master's degree in design thinking. And with that sort of knowledge, I want to bring that into our school and prepare our, you know, our, our students for the future, but also give our teachers the ability to, to teach those sort of things as well.
Thank you. All right, so the next question will go to Scott first. What is your stance on the school's policy on technology use in the classroom, as well as personal devices?
Okay. I think that technology is an essential part of where our children are going for the future. I think that they should have the ability to learn everything they possibly can for, you know, in the classroom with the computer. I am, I don't think students should have the ability to use their phones in school. I, I firmly believe that phones are a distraction. And they need to be put in some sort of locker or some sort of case when students get to school. And, you know, parents will say, I need to get in touch with my children, and, and I'm all for that, I think that as well. But I think that they could call the front office, or a student can swing by the front office and make that phone call that they need to do. So I am against personal devices in the school. But I am very much in favor of kids learning how to code and do different things on their computer here at school.
Thank you, Mr. Gary?
I'm going to ask you to repeat it if you don't mind.
I don't mind. What is your stance on the school's policy on technology use in the classroom, as well as personal devices?
Okay, so another two-part question. In terms of technology in the classroom, I believe that technology can be an excellent augment to the teachers in the classroom. There is a place for technology in the classroom. I think the kids expect it, parents expect it, and it does, can be an effective way to teach children. In that, by that same token, I'll say at the end of the day, teachers teach children. And that's why I believe it's the board should be pushing to ensure that we have fabulous teachers, but we have fabulous teachers that are retiring. So I, I want to make sure that the teachers coming in are the best and the brightest, and that we have, that we spend a lot of time and effort ensuring that we have the best teachers at this school. Because we could have the best technology, and I believe we have the best technology. But we need to have the best teachers to go along and know how to use that technology most effectively. In regards to cell phones, it's been written about, it's been in the journal, it's been in the Times, everywhere you see it. The short answer is, I'm against it. The longer answer is, it's something that needs to be examined more fully. I will say this, we draw from a number of different backgrounds. And people coming to the school, that's one of the things that I love about this school. So for me, I, my gut is telling me we, we, cell phones should, should be extraordinarily limited in our schools. However, I am more than willing to hear people say why they think cell phones should be in this school. Because, you know, I, I can sympathize, especially as, as a, from a family that has two working parents, they need sometimes, that, that the reality of cell phones are here, and they're something that families really depend on to make things run right.
Thank you. All right, so the next question goes to Mr. Graves. No, Mr. Gary first, yes. What do you believe is the role of schools in teaching children about sex, cyber safety, wellness, drug and alcohol prevention, and bullying?
Okay, there's a lot there, yeah. You went from two-part questions to five-part questions, that's okay. Here's a, I think, I'm going to answer it broadly because a lot there. I think that schools should provide a framework from which students are able to make decisions. Okay, so things like sex, things like drug and alcohol use, things like all the other things that parents, quite frankly, are terrified by at times. I think the school can provide a groundwork for those type of, those type of things. But ultimately, it's the parents that need to have, it, it needs to be in concert with the parents. So I think parents should play a role in some of those things. The school can provide the foundation for that and provide information on it. But ultimately, I think it should be left to the parents to decide what level they want to take that to. And just to, to wind back a little, I think when we're teaching our students to think analytically, I think they'll be better suited and better able to make decisions for themselves on topics like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Graves?
Yeah, and I, and I agree with Brian 100% on that, on, on that answer. But what I, what I would like to add to it is that as a school district, potentially, we could supply parents with the ability to learn more about how to bring those sort of ideas to their children. You know, I think that we've, we've created programs here, you know, community adult programming. Can we bring adult programming to assist our parents in some of those messages? You know, some parents, you know, might not be, might not have the, sort of the framework that Brian mentioned on how to teach that to their kids. But I think our teachers can supply the framework, I think that parents can reinforce it. But I would like to bring programs to our parents to help them, you know, execute that to our children.
Thank you, all right, so the next question will go to Mr. Graves first. In what ways do you feel Foco can better prepare students for the future academically, socially, and emotionally?
Well, I, I think that we need to give children the ability to, I, I'd like to add to our curriculum, yes, we need high-level mathematics, we need high-level science. But I want to teach kids resilience, I want to teach kids adaptability. I want to teach them this sort of, you know, high rate of, of, of learning. I also want to add creativity into everything that we teach them. And, you know, I want to make sure our students enter high school with the highest level of, you know, everything that we could possibly give them in the time that they're here at school. And, you know, and so they can, you know, you have to understand the byproduct of everything we give to them is their ability to then go out and change the world. And I, and I'm, you know, I think that, you know, we, you know, we have academics that, you know, let's call it standard academics. But I would really love to add, you know, some of the other things that I mentioned, like resilience and adaptability and, you know, thinking that things, thinking about things in a different way.
They asked you to repeat it.
Yes. In what ways do you feel Foco can better prepare students for the future academically, socially, and emotionally?
Okay, so academically, I think by providing them with a solid academic framework and basic mastery of the basics, I think that's going to prepare them for the future. Like I talked earlier, this is a school district that goes only until the eighth grade. Okay, we're preparing them for life, but, but we're preparing them for our partner high schools. So preparing our students to succeed at the partner hikes, high schools, I think is the first and one of the most important steps. Socially and emotionally, this is a, when we talk about the future, nobody's got a crystal ball, certainly not me. So I don't know, some of the best ways, I can tell you this, though, I think that our students need to be able to analyze and think critically. And another critical course, critical item that I think I would love to see our students succeed at and thrive at is to be able to evaluate sources. Just as I mentioned earlier, there's a number of ways to communicate now, and everybody seems to communicate differently. There's no end to the sources of information out there. And one of the skills that we're going to ask, be asking of our students and their future employers are going to be asking of them is the ability to evaluate sources. So that's something I'd love, I, I think that we could do here at this school, and I think we do it, and I think it could be done. We, I hope that we continue to do that.
Thank you. All right, so the next question will, Mr. Gary, you will answer first. What do you see is the most challenging issues facing the district for educational issues, social issues, financial issues?
Okay, three-part. Educationally, I keep on hammering it home, but it's, it's, I think, again, because we're JPK through eight, I think educationally is helping, helping our students to form good habits. And, you know, I'm a, you know, that, that, that saying like well begun is half done. I think we're the well begun here for their life beyond. So educationally, I think habits is something that we can form in providing structure. Kids require structure, they need structure, and I think our teachers provide that to them. So that's one thing, educationally. Socially, I think extracurricular programs, we've had an abundance of new programs offered this year. I'm super proud of those programs, and one of the benefits of those programs is the social benefit. Because I don't know about you, I can't speak for other parents, but for me, anytime I don't have to get into it with my kids over, over a screen, or, or anytime they're in a safe place, this school, amongst their peers, doing something positive, whether it's chess club, 3D printing, intramural sports, that is going to be addressing the social needs of our children. And the last was financially, one of the things we're fond of saying, we, saying on the board is there are no barriers to, is reducing barriers to our success. One of the things I'm very proud of is the way this school treats every student and every family, that we take away barriers and we make sure that there's accessibility for every family in this, in this district.
Thank you. Mr. Graves, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
What do you see as the most challenging issues facing the district for educational issues, social issues, financial issues?
Great, thank you very much. I think social media is one of the most challenging issues that faces, you know, our school district and any school district out there. I think that we need to teach children how to be safe, but we also need to teach them how to adapt to the, you know, to everything that they are seeing on social media and giving them the support to let them know that they are important and, and, you know, incredible humans that are going to go out and change the world. And I, and I feel like teaching them resilience is, is something that is going to be very challenging, but I think very, very important. As Brian mentioned, this school district has the ability to think big and financially. As Brian mentioned, this school district has the ability to think big and financially. We're able to accomplish big ideas, so I I don't, I don't think that there's anything that this school district can't do. And, you know, and and I feel like, you know, if the big ideas come to the table, then we can accomplish them for sure.
Thank you. Alright, so the next question will go to you first, Mr. Graves. Communication has been an issue this year. How will you use your position to strengthen the voices who endorse your vote?
I have not experienced communication being a problem at the school, at our school. But I'd be willing to listen to any of our community members that thought our communication lacked. I think that, you know, we have emails, we have text message. You know, we do post different ideas and different outreach on social media. But I have not experienced communication being a problem here at the school. But I'd be willing to listen to, you know, any of the community members to hear what they thought would be a better. A better plan to get more information to to the community.
This is something I've heard before, and it is communication, as I said earlier, is always a challenge, everybody does it differently. How would I strengthen voice, voices of, I'm gonna paraphrase here, people who vote for me? I would encourage them to to contact me, quite frankly, and it's something that we could put on as a discussion item. A public discussion item during a board meeting, and you can hear what the different members of the board have to say, what they think about that topic. Kind of shooting from the hip here, I think early in the school year is the time to to really establish, just like students establish. Habits is adults establish habits. So I would encourage the school and the administration and the board to think very deeply and thoughtfully about the way we communicate early on. At that, at that first, at that first meeting or that first two meetings of the year, because that kind of sets the tone. Because if you get an email, well, it's gonna be emails this year. If you get a a text message, well, it's gonna be, if you get both. But my point is, in thinking about communication and thinking about the time on the board here. I think that first couple of of meetings are critical to setting and setting expectations. Where the public on how that board is going to be communicating, communicating, and equally, how the community can communicate to the board.
Thank you. Alright. Outdoor time for kids. Does the school have a parameter they use for keeping kids inside during winter months? I believe you are.
Okay, man, I'm glad you asked me first, because I love outdoor time. More time outdoors, the better. The school does have policies. I believe they're followed. I encourage my kids to put on sweatshirts every day now, even when it's cold out, now you now that it's like cold, hot, cold, they're walking out the door. And I'm telling them, I've received communications from the school, from Mr. Brown, saying. Please make sure your kids are appropriately dressed so that they can spend recess outs- outdoors. Now, I trust in this school, and I I think that if kids aren't getting outdoors, it may be, and I'm, again, I don't know. Maybe because they're not dressed appropriately, but I do know that we do have policies and our children do spend time outdoors. Sometimes you get lemonade from lemons, we got a big lemon with COVID, but one of the one of the lemonades that we got out of it was time outside. And I know teachers have been spending time outside with their students, my daughter was telling me the other day. She couldn't wait to go outside and and learn in an outdoor environment, so I do think I am a believer in outdoor time. I believe we have a policy, I believe it, if somebody felt like it should be reviewed, I'd be willing to listen to that. And, yeah, I'm a big fan of outdoor time.
Mr. Graves?
Sure, yeah, I'm I'm sure, I'm I'm pretty sure that our policy has to revolve around safety and a certain temperature and going outside. I don't know exactly what it is, what temperature it is, but, you know, be very interested to talk with anyone about it. But Brian's exactly right, you know, nature heals all, time outside, fresh air is very important to. To kids, to teachers, to everybody, you know, and we have a beautiful campus, a campus that has so much to offer. You know, we we don't go into the preserve as much as I would like to, but we have access to the preserve. But outdoor time is so important for children to breathe fresh air and to take in the rays of the sun. It's 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 just a perfect remedy to then come back inside and learn. So I am a huge proponent of being outside as much as we can, and I also think we have the ability. If we, if there's a student that doesn't have the appropriate. You know, clothing or whatnot to go outside, then I think we also have the ability to make sure that they have that. So they can enjoy their time outside as well with their friends, so.
Thank you. Alright, so this is our last question. Unless anybody has any questions. There's a question. So I'll ask this, while that one, while the last question comes forward. And this is a bit of a reprise, because I believe you have addressed these this issue. Oh, there are three more. Alright, so I believe, Mr. Graves.
Sure, yeah.
You're up first. What is your or the board's position on student cellphone use in school during school hours?
The current rule for the school is that I think cell phones are supposed to stay in. The bags of the students, which then go into lockers if they do have them. But I think it's a very common knowledge that students carry their cell phones with them. And have bathroom breaks where they do use their phones. So my, you know, obviously, this is a a very large discussion, a discussion that has to be decided by many. But my stance stays the same, I firmly believe that. Giving students and parents the ability to communicate with their children is a must. Whether we issue flip phones to every student here with a personalized number, just like we issue computers. Then maybe that's the the remedy, but a flip phone will not have the capabilities to. You know, go to TikTok and go to, you know, Instagram and whatnot. And that would be maybe a way that they could communicate with their parents for safety reasons and for organizational reasons, as Brian mentioned. But I firmly believe that we would save a lot of time and stop, you know, a lot of noise. If our students didn't have cell phones at school.
Thank you. Mr. Gary?
Just to kind of follow up what I've already said on the topic. I would certainly be, I'd be interested to hear what parents have to say. I'd be interested to hear what teachers have to say, and I'd be interested in to hear what the administration has to say. Because those, you know, as a parent, it's important, but they are the ones who are going to be dealing with it on a regular basis. So I think whatever the policy that we come, any, we change a policy, keep the policy, talk about the policy. I think that it's important that it be a conversation between parents, the administration, teachers. Everybody that's involved and and impacted by that decision, but it's certainly something that warrants greater discussion, in my opinion.
Thank you. Alright, so the next question, Mr. Gary, I'll go to you first. What do you hope to improve upon for the students and parent community here at Poco? This school seems to be so close to serving all students, but there is much to be improved on as well. Academically, socially, and to push for best practices in classroom and teacher curriculum.
Okay, so it's, I've been on the board three years, and there is much that needs to be improved upon. There's much that we have to be thankful for, and there's many successes, but there is, I do I do agree that there is room for growth academically, socially. And I will say this, and I know it's it's called comfort, but real change takes time. And to to, real change takes time, and it follows its own pattern. And I want to communicate to parents and voters in this community that there is change at foot, that we are going in the right direction. But it's, I know it's cold comfort to hear you, to hear the words be patient, but it does require a certain degree of patience. That being said. I think we've done a lot, one thing that I'm really super proud of academically. Is the way that we've gone about recruiting teachers, because as I said earlier, at the end of the day, it's teachers that teach students, not technology and not anything else. I came up with the term, I'd love to see more legacy teachers, those are the teachers as an adult, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years later. I'm sure we all have them in our lives, teachers that we can recall having profound impacts on us. And our our siblings, our friends, so I'm a big fan of improving this school academically, socially. And I think a lot of that can be. Happen through recruiting better teachers, and that's, again, I just want to be clear, the teachers that we have are doing a phenomenal job. I love all of our teachers, and I think supporting those teachers and being ensuring that they're able to to do the best that they can. That they have all the resources that they need to perform their job to the best of their ability.
Thank you. Mr. Graves?
Can you repeat the question, please?
What do you hope to improve upon for the students and parent community here at Poco? This school seems to be so close to serving all students, but there is much to be improved on as well. Academically, socially, and to push for the best practices in classroom and teacher curriculum.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think we need, you know, our teachers here at Pecanico are incredible, but I would like to give them more tools and more resources. To make our mathematics and our science programs and our foreign language programs even more powerful than they are now. I want to make sure that our children are ready for high-level mathematics in high school. The same thing with science and the same thing with foreign language. We, you know, I've I've heard from some parents that some of our students aren't ready for foreign language program in high school. And so I think that that needs to be addressed, but we need to give our teachers more tools to make sure that our students are are better. Prepared for when they enter high school.
Thank you. Alright, so the next question will go to Mr. Graves first. Do you feel that the amount of work expected from students in terms of homework and project-based work is too little? Too much, or the right amount?
Sure, I think that we need more project-based work. I think that when a student actually does something physically, they learn more. But I also feel as if when they, when they do something physically, but then they are asked to turn around and teach that. To other people, they learn at a much higher level. So I am a huge proponent of project-based learning. And we've seen that in action, you know, my wife is the family and consumer science teacher. And she, in her classroom, they are making things that is important to life. You know, they're learning how to clean dishes, they're learning how to do laundry, they are learning how to write in cursive. They are learning how to cook healthy meals, and I think that it's that type of learning, which really, really influences. You know, how someone goes about it. I I'm all for, you know, obviously, learning in the classroom and homework is obviously important. But if we could add more project-based learning to all of our studies, I think it would be very important, for sure.
Mr. Gary?
If you could repeat it, please, thanks.
Do you feel that the amount of work expected from students in terms of homework and project-based work is too little? And too much, or the right amount?
You know, it's it's kind of like, it's like the Goldilocks, right? You don't want too little, you don't want too much, you want just right. And again, I think our teachers are very good at doing that, are providing the appropriate amount of work, there is room for improvement. I think at the end of the day, it's important that students are treated like individuals. Because the porch might be too hot for you, but it's not hot enough for me. So I think teachers can recognize that and adjust accordingly for the students. We want each student, every student, to succeed to their greatest capacity. And, you know, and to be pushed a little bit, too. So in terms of too much, too little, just right. I don't know, it's, I feel like I can only give you that my experiences as as a parent, I think it's sometimes just right, sometimes too little, sometimes too much. But I think overall, it's appropriate. Project-based, project-based seems to be how much of the world works, much of the world. Work world works, so I'm certainly in favor of project-based. One of the things we've talked about is kind of a, on the board, rather, is we've talked about a capstone project. Something this, a multi-year project that culminates in the eighth grade and creates like a look back over their time, the students' time here at Pecanico. So that's, that's a really something exciting that should be happening in the future. So I'm, but a short answer is I'm in favor of project-based work and collaborative work. Talking to somebody recently that we're getting. Social skills become more and more valuable as people become less comfortable meeting and working in person. I think it's important for a school to be a place where we teach them, teach children how to work together, how to speak to each other. I mean, some, I have a niece who was unable to call up. Was unable to call up for a pizza, because she didn't want to talk on the phone.
The next question will go to you first.
Okay.
You can use your time as you see.
Yeah, yeah, I got.
What are specific ways that the board would be able to improve academics at the middle school level? As many parents consider this a need?
It starts at the top and comes down through through us, we have to support the administration and our teachers. We have one thought that I had, and it makes me excited to think about, we have, I don't know the numbers, but extraordinarily high participant. Participation rates in our modified sports program. And to me, that indicates that we have students here at the school, so it's kind of like a captured audience. I would certainly applaud any efforts to take that time where they are here, student athletes. And in between the athlete time, they're still a student, so that might be one way. Again, that's for the administration to decide, we, again, we set the vision. And but the idea that our students are here, I forget the number, I'm gonna shoot from the hip again, about eighty percent to eighty-five percent of our students participate. In modified sports, which is the the middle school level, and I'd love them to be able to capture that time for things like homework help, extra help. And to be academically engaged before they're physically engaged.
Thank you. Mr. Graves?
Question, please, thank you.
What are specific ways that the board would be able to improve academics at the middle school level? As many parents consider this a need?
Yeah, well, I'd I'd like to corral the corral parents and hear from them exactly what. You know, what they're seeing and and, you know, and and hear their message. And then bring that to create, you know, policy here at the school to to improve that. You know, I I do think that we have, you know, incredible programs, Brian mentioned, you know, our 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 sports program. But the other things that we have are, are, you know, I think it's eighty-five percent of our students are involved in the music program as well. And I think that that is, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a definite sign that our 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 children are are. You know, learning at a very high level, but I think it would be, you know, get the parents together, hear what they're, what they're, you know. Where we can make improvements and try to make improvements from there.
Thank you. Alright, we will now move on to closing statements, I want to remind you that closing statements are to be two minutes or less. You are also welcome, if there's something you wish to rebut, there's there's time permitted for that as well. And the first opening statement will be given by Brian Gary.
Okay, I'd like to start by thanking those who helped make tonight happen, as everyone here and who will be watching on Zoom. I'd also like to thank Scott, communities need people who are willing to put themselves forward and get get involved. So thank you to Scott, and thank you to everybody who's here this evening and put this together. As evidenced by what's been said here tonight, there's so much to be proud of and grateful for here at Pecanico. It has been an honor and a pleasure to have played a role in moving this school district forward. A school board sets a vision for a district, as I said earlier, and I've worked hard to be and effective in helping set that a vision. I'm a board member who speaks and who listens, I'm a board member who deliberates but does not shy away from difficult decisions. And perhaps most importantly, I'm a board member who places the well-being of our students and our school above all else. I truly come to love the school and our community, and I can tell you this, from the bottom of my heart, there is no school in Westchester County. Private or public that I would rather send my three daughters to. So I'd like to just ask everybody here for your vote and your support. Last, I'd like to address those members of our school community who are unable to vote. Whatever the reason may be, because there's a variety, as I've spoken to people, I've spoken to some of you, and I've speak, and I've hoped to speak to others. I'm grateful for the support you have offered to me and to this school. I want you to know that your opinions and insights matter to me, they matter to our school board, and they matter to our school. Last, she skipped out before I could say it to her, I want to thank my wife Elizabeth, and I'd like to also thank my three daughters. Maeve, Nora, and Caroline, and I'd like to thank them for being so supportive of me.
Thank you. Mr. Graves?
Thank you, thank you, Brian, for your commitment. Yeah, I too want to thank the League of Women's Voters and the PTA for putting this together. Why run for the board? I'm going to say my inspiration comes from my wife. Uh, after twenty-five years in the fashion industry, she wanted to find a way to make more impact on people's lives. And she's been able to do that by being a teacher here at Pecanico. I don't know if people know this, but Pecanico is one of the most diverse schools in all of New York State. And my wife has been able to celebrate our great diversity in her classroom, because she's supported by our board. And she's been able to celebrate our students and our families through food. You know, sometimes our, the, sometimes the simplest of ideas are our biggest ideas. And I admire what she's been able to do, but it's only happened because she's been supported by this incredible place. And when she comes home at night, excited about the things that she was able to accomplish with the students, I want to have that type of intellectual ecstasy that she experiences on the board. So I uh, you know, this school district has the ability to dream big. And I want to be there to help them, you know, create big ideas that can, you know, that our students can go out and use and that our families can use to go make a bigger impact on the world. Um, so I I feel like all roads lead to Pecanico, and I I want to be there to support that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a close?
Uh, no, my only closing would be to remind people to vote on Tuesday, the um, my first, from seven AM to nine PM, and all the voting is
Uh, in person here, uh, and down in our uh, gymnasium.
In the gymnasium.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Wow, thank you, Brian. You're amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. It's nice to see you. Thank you.
Yeah, likewise. Take care.